Everybody, we're about ready to get rolling with our informal session and Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, at this time, we're going to have our budget director present there, give Council a presentation on funding options for Parks After Dark. As you recall, Council passed the resolution.
A couple of weeks ago, asking staff to review Level Green or Parks After Dark and come back with different options for funding.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, welcome.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As City Manager said, I have a very short, quick briefing. I know you all have a full agenda today. So the purpose is talk about potential funding options for consideration by City Council, should they determine that it be a priority to establish and expand the Parks After Dark program next summer in the neighborhood of Level Green Park. So a little background as to the Parks After Dark program. So originally, the concept and recommendation came from the Mayor's Youth Violence Task Force. City Council quickly took action on that, approving an ordinance in February 2023, establishing Parks After Dark program for the Williams Farm Park. Direction was also provided at that time to consider, give consideration of annualizing that funding in future operating budgets, and it was included in the FY24 operating budget as well as the FY25 continuation at Williams Farm. As a part of the reconciliation process, City Council decided that it was a priority to expand the program to not only include Williams Farm but also add an additional park at the Green Run. So reconciliation item was added to putting, establishing additional 3.1 FTEs and $330,000 in the FY25 operating budget for that being supported through the use of fund balance. More recently, as the resolution City Manager was talking about, occurred in early June with direction for city staff and the City Manager to report back within 14 days on some funding options, as well as establish a future point in time for discussion and conversation regarding extending the, expanding the program to a third park. So that's the purpose of the presentation today. And the funding op, next slide is just going to talk about some of the funding options that were provided in the previous memo or packet items to City Council. So Parks and Rec identified the need to, if it's, this program is to be expanded to a third park, a additional funding need of $353,000, which will include supplies, vendor costs, rental, rental of equipment cost, as well as the appropriations to fund 3.1 FTEs. That includes one full-time position and 10 part-time positions in that. So to fund that request, some options for consideration by City Council. It's very early in the fiscal year, so some options put forward for consideration could be a transfer from the General Fund Reserve contingencies in that amount with the action item by Council to establish the FTEs. Another option for consideration could be an appropriation of fund balance from the General Fund to fund this program in FY25's operating budget for next summer, as well as establishing the FTE authority of 3.1. Something important to note is that both of these options for consideration are one-time in nature, meaning that's the funding sources one time. So there would be, if this is a funding priority for City Council, additional direction would be needed to give guidance to continue this funding in few, in the development of future years' operating budgets, similar to the direction that was provided as part of reconciliation for the Green Run Park and the use of fund balance that went towards that in FY25. So typically, whenever I talk to you all at the beginning of the budget process, we talk about budget drivers and things we're trying to accommodate and adjust for. So this would be an example of what we would consider as those budget drivers and try and put resources towards it. It's important to note that to fund these in a sustainable manner, we would need to look to identify a long-term bill payer for this. So we would be expecting to utilize some revenue growth. Should revenue growth not be accepted or occur, if this remains a pro, high enough priority, it could compete with other programs and resources as a part of the budget development process. And so with that, I'll leave it on this slide for City Council to be able to take this topic up for discussion or give further direction.
Any questions? Chris?
Mr. Mayor, how many think this is two?
The Parks and Rec Department. Um, not Parks and Rec, but it's probably around 600 in the city overall.
And can you specifically get us Parks and Rec?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Hey, anybody else at this point?
Kevin, thank you. Have we, I know this beginning, well, it'll be the beginning of fiscal year, or it was yesterday?
That's right. Happy New Fiscal Year.
Yeah. So we've not, we've not tapped into this 1.5 million of reserve contingencies. And can you explain maybe just some examples over the prior year, what, what, what we've been called upon, you know, what those funds have been called upon for, for use?
Whenever, should something come up, a good example within the last year was within the voter registrar's office, there were some special elections that were called. The burden of those elections fall on the locality to fund. So there was a allocation, I believe, of $450,000 from this reserve to cover the cost of those unexpected elections.
Do we have a tendency to exhaust the contingency?
In most every year, yes. We, we fully utilize the reserve. And in terms of the vacancy savings as being consideration, if we were a little bit further in the fiscal year, similar to the February action item where Council took, I think vacancy savings might have been utilized for that. We can have a better sense of the vacancy savings we're anticipating and do a projection on that. But being two days into the fiscal year, it's
You haven't shut the books down yet?
It's a little, little early to make the, make the projection, but it, it's a reasonable use. For it'd be one time in major as well.
So our fund balance is between 8% and 12%? Where are we starting?
So I believe it's nine, 9.8% is the estimate at this point in time. So utilization of about $353,000 would not move it below the projected, the projected fund balance below the 8% to 12% policy City Council has.
It's so early in the year, I can't get that contingency fund this quickly. I think if we learn to do something, the fund balance is probably the way to go.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I agree with what you said because one of the other things is need to test this, just like we did with the Williams Farms, to see whether we plan to do it as permanent or not. You still have to go through the same process of assessing it at least another year. So we're not just looking at one year, really looking at it as a pilot and then the second one, the final assessment of, yeah, I'll keep it going. So using this other funding instead of the big one will be more important. Thank you.
Yes, Josh?
So it was right now we're at 9.4 what?
9.8% is the estimate.
So like 1% equals how many dollars?
I believe 1% is 10 million?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Sabrina?
So first of all, thank you for bringing this information back to provide options to expand this very important program in the Level Green neighborhood. I would certainly, given the two options, of course, this is cer, certainly not a, an item that would fall in option one as an unfore, unforeseen need. And so in keeping in line with, I guess, the restrictions and the delineations for these different options and funds, I would go with option two. It seems like the most plausible situation or option, given the circumstances.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Barbara?
I mean, I think at this point, are still all three of these considered pilots? Or have we determined that the Williams Farm would be a permanent?
Um, Councilman Henley, it's, I don't think, it's up to Council, but I don't think we're considering Williams Farm a pilot anymore because this is the second year of funding that is received. Yeah. I think, um, Green Run is considered a pilot, which will start next, um, next summer. And this one will certainly be considered a pilot if Council approves it.
I, I think we, at some point, we need to have some assessment from public safety about the effectiveness and if they can show that there were reactions because of this program and so forth. Because if we find out that it, it truly was a, had a major positive impact, we might want to make it permanent sooner in other places or be looking for other people or places. So I, I think I read some places, not on this, but somewhere, that we had not had a final assessment from the police department yet about the program. I'm not sure at what point they would be able to do that.
Yeah, Councilman Henley, um, the police department of Parks and Rec briefed in June on this. But what they did say was that since it was just one year, it's hard to really extrapolate if it's actually a trend associated with Parks After Dark. So that's why they suggested they probably need around two to three years' worth of data. But from the first year, anecdotally, but we can't necessarily say there's a causal relationship. It looks like it was, it was a positive in the Williams Farms neighborhood.
Hey, Michael, I'm first.
I'll follow up on the question about staffing. And this may be a question from a person who I know is here. With regard to, could you tell me a little bit more about how those 3.1 FTEs would be incorporated into the funding or to the budget? So would that be an additional 3.1 new staff members? And then to build on Mr. Taylor's question, I guess specifically around what I understand is that we may be experiencing challenges with fully staffing up the Parks and Rec department. So knowing that, or recognizing that, how in fact will staffing be accounted for in terms of making the program possible? In other words, we can't fill all the spots we have. How are we going to add three more in more simple terms?
Detective Kersch was here.
Good afternoon, everyone. So the question regarding the staffing. So the staffing model for Parks After Dark sites is one full-time and around 10 summer part-time. The summer staff are just hired for about 12 weeks. It is a full-time position year-round, setting up contracts, vendors, logistics. And so the full-time persons year-round, again, like I said, the other staff are just hired a few weeks before the program, go through training, and help run the activities at the site during the event. Where are we standing right now with full-time staff? Our department is funded in two buckets, if you recall. One bucket is the Special Revenue Fund, which those funds are earmarked and fund rec center operations. So all positions as well as administration is in that bucket. And so you have the rec center operations and all support services. The general fund positions and areas of operation are outside the rec centers. So that's sports management, park events permitting, the youth opportunities office, which this program is a part of, childcare at the school sites. Those are general fund as well as parks and landscape services. So parks maintenance and citywide, citywide mowing and grounds maintenance. Those positions are all general fund in the same bucket. We are actually right now doing great with full-time hiring. So we have fully recovered from the pandemic. Full-time positions fill rather quickly and are really strong. We do struggle. Where we do still have problems is in part-time areas of operation, such as sports management, lifeguards, and some part-time areas. That's where our greatest challenge is, not so much with the full-time. I will say we've been very successful and very pleased at the part-time hiring for the Parks After Dark program. Out of 10 positions, we're usually filling about eight out of 10 of those from neighborhood youth that are in that area, which has had a great positive impact. So this program, we don't have problems with hiring the part-time, but we do some, some other areas, just for your information.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just want to add one other thing for context as well. When we're not able to fill the part-time positions, the Parks and Recreation Department does use the vacancy as so, savings associated with the part-time positions to fund the overtime for full-time staff that's going to take over some of the part-time responsibilities that they're not able to fill. But also just want to clarify as well, overall, the city's doing great on hiring. We're basically at our pre-pandemic levels and we basically got around a 9% to 10% vacancy rate, which as you all know, we use a vacancy rate for overtime, but also it rolls into pay go for the next year CIP as well. So we're to the place now where we're kind of normalized and anything kind of less than that gives us a little concerns from a funding standpoint.
Okay, just as a follow-up, I, I don't have a question, just a comment. That is great to know. And in fact, I'd love to get more information about that. I think many of people still have a perception that the city is experiencing staffing shortages and difficulties. And the fact that we're not, I think, is credit to a lot of great work that you all are doing. And that's good to know. I'm especially thrilled to hear that those part-time positions are being filled by young people from the surrounding neighborhoods, which is, has so many positive impacts in addition to the fact that it's a job. It's great neighborhood connections and they know the people they're serving. And I, I just love everything about that. And that really addresses one of the question, the question or concern that I had about staffing. So I'm, I'm thrilled to hear that. Thank you.
First? Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I'm going to direct my question to Mr. Kerschman, but Mayor, you may want to pop, you may want to hop in. I'm, I'm trying to look at the overall strategy we have because I know you said a lot of staff or some of our team traveled out to, to California. And in the last presentation, I asked you specifically and you answered that it wasn't just one program. They had kind of variations of Parks After Dark. But this seems to just be following closely after the Williams Farm. And this is a key component of the comprehensive strategy of the Mayor's Youth Violence Task Force. And so my question is, if this is related to youth violence, how does Williams Farm kind of exit out of the pilot program when our professional staff has indicated that one year's data is not enough to determine if it's actually impacted youth violence? So wouldn't moving it out of a pilot without having that data kind of go against the goal? And so if we're looking at this for a long-term funding, what is a, my first question is, what does a, what in LA, what was the length of their pilot? Or did they just roll it out across six counties and?
Their program started, and I'll have to get back with you with specifics, but I believe they started at 10 sites and it grew to 42 over the past decade plus.
Were all 10 sites using the same format, the same?
I'll have to check it back to you.
Okay. Because I mean, otherwise, we're going to be here again and again. And if the police department needs another, say, another two years of data to see if it's actually impacting the crime, then I couldn't understand why it would exit the pilot state. But thank you.
Okay, Sabrina?
I'm just wondering, certainly going into a new budget cycle, if we certainly understand the need for this program and, and, you know, possibly expanding it throughout the city, just really finding out how to make it a priority in our budget, budget for it, is probably going to be the most important thing to make future projections and understand how it could fully be realized throughout the city. But I also wanted to follow up on what was mentioned about the staff. Your staff was so kind to provide information on the, the student youth employment program. And so definitely look forward to the youth of Level Green being considered to help be a part of providing staff and availability for the pilot program. So I've passed that information along and we will certainly actively be recruiting to make sure as well that we have the adequate staff from the surrounding neighborhood to help.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions at this point? So, you know, I guess the, the assumption is that perhaps we need more data? Is that word on kind of reading from the Council that? Yeah, Amelia, please.
Well, what I want to mention, we are going through that second year. So that is why we're saying it's no longer a pilot for that specific area. And it may take two more years, but at least we're going to look at the data from each year of what's going on. And if you listened, I think it was last night on the news, they were talking about how crime in Virginia Beach was included, is going down. And also mentioned to do with the youth. So something is happening positive. And people enjoy, I go out there and they really enjoy what they're doing. And the opportunity to expand it to others, two more sites, and maybe another time, two more sites, you know, you crawl before you walk. So I think it's a positive program. It's doing well. And thank you all for bringing it to Virginia Beach.
So I guess there are a bunch of questions, sir. It's like, so, okay, so I know we're saying like the one is not a pilot anymore. At what point does it become not a pilot? We're adding new locations, you know what I mean?
I think pilot for us
Yeah.
from a budgetary standpoint is one time, one year, right?
Right.
Yeah. So once Council gives something ongoing funding, then it's no longer a pilot, right? So like basically, basically, we call it as that as some kind of budgeting nomenclature to, to announce that this is one-time funding. So right now, this will go in as a pilot because this is one-time funding because Council hasn't identified an ongoing revenue source or ongoing reduction in expenditures to cover. So that's what we mean by pilot.
Okay. So, so then my follow-up to that is kind of what Ms. Ross Hammond is saying is that if, if we know the first one has worked so successfully, right, then if we're going to be moving forward with number two and number three, shouldn't we then go ahead and make that part of our, that's what you're asking, right? Like, we need to make, go ahead and budget for that. This is showing we want, I don't know any of us that are against this. So makes sense to me that we need to move forward with it.
Yep. So I think, so similarly, in the budget, when Council added the Green Run site in the reconciliation budget, that one's a pilot because Council is a one-time payment source. If Council is to give direction for us to move forward with option two here, it'll be a one-time payment source. And Council could, similarly to what it did with the Green Run one, ask the manager to consider this as part of the ongoing budget process. And then that will put, that we will look to see if there's offsetting revenues or expenditures to address it as part of the budget.
Okay. Yeah, Sabrina?
Well, it would seem to me that if we decided to go permanent with this, as in multiple locations, you wouldn't need a, an administrator for each one. I mean, it seems that some of these things would be overall savings to be able to use.
And that's what's going on now. So if you all recall, Council, the first Parks After Dark had more staff and more equipment because you needed to get supervisors and then more equipment to kind of get it going.
Structure.
This staff has less equipment and less staff because, to your point, Councilman Henley, there is a program person that's over the program that can manage the staff in the different sites.
About $300,000 less in the first one.
Correct.
Yep.
Josh?
Thank you, Sabrina. And just quick, what's the young lady who's, who is our person in charge of Parks After Dark now?
So Tiffany is over the entire unit. She's the coordinator over youth opportunities office.
She was the one who came and gave the
Correct. There's multiple programs.
And she's fantastic.
We just hired a new gentleman who will be the supervisor over Parks After Dark.
Okay. I just, a shout out to Tiffany because I've, I've seen her in the field. She's fantastic.
Great. Thank you.
And she gave a great, great presentation as well. Is this, the, the proposal for Level, Level Green, is that for, is for next summer?
Next summer, similar to Green Run. It'll be for, it'll start probably May of 25, right, to go to like August, September of, August of September 25. Yep.
And will that new park be done by then? Or will, is it, we've got a substitute location until?
We will not. We will need to, we will need to find a substitute location, either a different park or perhaps a school site in cooperation with the Virginia Beach Public Schools. We'll find that site. But then the following summer, June of 2026, it would, if the program is still here and funded by Council, we will take it over to Level Green Park because that park is going to be a perfect location for the program in terms of walkability, access to high density around it, spray ground, playground, parking lot, bathrooms, basketball court. So it'll just be a really nice location in the future. But next summer, it's just going to be under construction.
So just me, I, I think as, as much as data would be helpful, certainly, and I think we, we should get additional information as, as we can see what the trend, where the trends are going. But I mean, just anecdotally, you know, subjectively, it, it seems to make sense. Give, give kids something to do at night so they don't get into, into other things. I think there would be just that benefit alone. And I, I know Williams Farm has been really successful too. So I'd be, I'd be okay.
And Mayor, I just, I do want to, if I wasn't clear the first time, the data did show positives, but what the police department suggested, they don't want to bank on that because it was just one-year data. You can't really tell a trend until you get two or three years' worth of data, right? But it did show that, at least for the first year, it did show that there was a positive impact. But it's just wanting to see a couple more years before you can actually say something associated with this is actually helping move the needle.
Would it be prudent just that, you know, of oral, is it ongoing already at Williams Farm?
It has started, yes.
That's my point. So would it be prudent, you know, to wait until we, once that closes down, then we have something to really grasp on and then we can determine, you know, the appropriate. Yes. Sabrina?
So I think you can actually separate the two because this particular request is separate from the data that you're talking about, that you need to continue the pilot and expand it throughout the city. So keep that separate. But what I'm asking here is not to wait and prolong expanding the program in Level Green because we know we need it. Many folks around the table have already concurred it's needed. So don't prolong a positive impactful program for data that you certainly can get either way. But it should not preclude us from moving forward with this particular item and expansion of the program. But I certainly think the data is important, but certainly in a separate action, please feel free to move on with that. But I don't want to have it tied to this particular resolution so that the program can move forward. And we do have two sites already. Providence Park is certainly an alternative. And then certainly the school, it was mentioned, College Park can be an alternative site as well. So I would suggest that we not prolong this action to expand the program in Level Green, but also continue with your search for data, but do that separately. So we're not delaying this progress. Thank you.
Yeah, but would it, would it be delaying the process if we just held up for that?
And, and when you say held, held up for the data, are you saying not to
Yeah, so we can
bring the action forward and approve it?
Let me put it this way. You know, I think it's a great concept, but I think I'm hearing some concerns from Council members that they would feel more comfortable if, you know, we have one more year of that. Is that my understanding or correct me?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah. You or anybody else?
No, I was, my point specifically was, the manager clarified it, typically in a pilot, if you're going to move out of that pilot, you've confirmed, you've identified that this is impactful, this is why we should expand it. And I, we haven't yet got the answer back from Director Kerschman on the benchmark and the, the experts were in California. So how many programs within their Parks After Dark, we're kind of modeling one, it seems like right now. And so how many variations of Parks After Dark, because I brought up the point last month, in District Eight, we're not seeing as much youth violence, but we are seeing other concerning impacts of depression and suicide and drug use. So I just wanted to understand if the police weren't comfortable quite yet saying that Parks After Dark Iteration One reduced violence, reduced, you know, arrest. I want to support this. Just, I don't know why we would say it's just moved past being a pilot, but the manager clarified that that was just nomenclature, not necessarily. So I will support the Councilwoman wanting to move forward. I just still would like to see the data because I would hate to lead the public into thinking that Parks After Dark is solving, you know, a specific issue.
Well, at the time that we would decide to make one or more of these permanent Well, at the time that we would decide to make one or more of these permanent, that would come at the budget time and then we would be designating a permanent revenue source. That would have to be something that's a new revenue.
Correct.
That's there because we're hiring these people, that's an ongoing cost. So once we determine it's to be permanent, that will be a decision made at the budget time. So I'm assuming when we have the budget for next year, 25, 20, we will have the data from this summer's Williams Farm, so we'll have two years of the, of the program. That will give us a much better viewpoint going forward. But we're not going to be making those kinds of decisions like this. It has to be a part of the budget if we're going to have to come up with a permanent revenue growth for this, for this program.
Correct. Similar to what happened with Williams Farm initially, when council created that program, they created it as a one time, a pilot with one time funding source. And then also included instructions for the manager to consider this as part of the budget that you all most recently adopted that started yesterday. And then council assessed that as part of the budget process and then adopted to fund it. But we will have, be able to probably have a second year of data for the Williams Farm Parks After Dark that could be included as part of the next budget for council's review and consideration of the next programs.
So I guess I have, is it, okay. So is there any doubt that the data is going to come back and say that the other two are going to be abject failures?
The other two, we won't be able to get, they don't start till next year.
Right, I know, but I'm asking your professional opinion. You're the subject matter expert in the area, you're like asking me a fire question.
So if you're talking specifically crime, I would really defer to the police department on that. The only thing I would say is, as well as LA has found, yes, this is envisioned as positive alternative crime reduction program. There are a lot of other intangible benefits that go along with these programs. Community building, connections, trust in police, getting to know your police officers. We've had parents come up to us and say, we don't have money for vacation, we're coming here every night. We've had kids come up to us and say, I haven't ate all day, thank you for this meal because I do not eat during the day and they're getting fed at night. We have had, so we get all these comments, right? It's all anecdotal. We had one person say, I'm so proud of the city, I'm so proud of my neighborhood that we have this now. So you've pride in your community. Lots of intangibles. Will there be a direct reduction in crime based on the program? We hope so.
So then my next thing is, and I agree with what Ms. Henley's asking as far as the data part, but if we wait till the data next year, then we're pushing these two back, Green Run and, and.
Green Run's already funded.
I'm sorry. Well, if I could have slid that under, it would help my heart. But anyway, I apologize. So it's, it's, Level Green would get kicked down the street, canned down the street again.
And we'll never stop looking at data. We're going to track the crime every year.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is why would we not go forward with Level Green at this point? I just, it, to me, I don't understand why we would not. And if we couldn't, I'd like to hear what everybody's got to say on where we're going to fall.
And that's why we're open for discussion. We just want to make sure, let me put it this way, you know, you know, it proved to be a great concept and the more we can get it out to the city over time would be optimal way to do things. And then.
I was just going to ask, Michael, are there components of the program that could be lifted out to be used just generally? Or does it have to be an all or nothing kind of thing?
What we have seen from our partners is consistently, consistency, multiple nights per week at the same location is what really builds community, builds trust and turns the needle, right? So one night a week or one night a week here is really just a special event. It's not this consistent, get to know your neighbors, you know, spend time with the police officers, play kickball with them every night, watch movies in the park. So there's certainly the components we can pull out and do elsewhere, but if it's just a one off program somewhere else, then it really just becomes a one night special event that doesn't quite have the community impact as a consistent, multiple nights per week all summer long.
I think it's a major learning process, you know, and I guess having three pilots is, you know, in three different neighborhoods gives you that opportunity to see what works at one place may not work at another. So, you know, as long as we're, we understand that this is a learning process for all of us and could, could apply to other parks and other places and so forth, so.
All right, Michael. And Amelia, then Michael.
Thank you. Just to mention, having the three, you have the one that's gone through the pilot, a second year and it's still ongoing, and you are adding two more. We're not saying why not just expand it everywhere else because it's methodical, not just to say one's going to be over in this area now and in that area now. We have to be consistent, that it's going, the way it's going, the three nights every week, the parents look forward and they are out there as well, and they get to meet other parents. So this is intergenerational, not a popularity contest. It's consistent, that is very important. The other point that Councilman Taylor brought up was that in his area, there are other types of issues, but there's still a need there. So as the data comes in with what occurs is his and the demographics are different, the kids that are over at Williams Farm are generally, may not be the same structural people as those at Level Green or those at Green Run, but they're all kids. So the bottom line is be consistent, let's work with the three, not add a whole bunch more until we see where this goes. But we've got to take it in steps. This is why I keep saying you've got to crawl before you walk. Don't promise too much to everybody. You've got to take it, you know, in steps. For me, that is important. I see some of the results. We haven't had all the reports from the police, but you can, just walking around, you can see the more relaxed situation that these families are having. So this is why when Councilwoman Ralph wants to see that in her neighborhood, when you have replication, that's a form of compliment. And this is what is going on, so we're really happy with what you're doing. We're so glad to see the youth having a job. They are very proud to wear whatever their badge is, that they are part of that Parks and Rec. And the more positive we feed for these young people, the better because they're going to be our next leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Well, I'm just reflecting further, we spend so much time around this table and in our work as council members, focused on economic development, professional development, and this is an example of community development. And we should be just, and we are, I think, being and continue to be just as serious, just as committed, just as methodical and thoughtful to community development as we are to economic development. Community development is economic development. And this is a great example, but let me also add that we acknowledge when we consider economic development opportunities, that they take time to cultivate. You have to, you have to bake them and over time, they produce a return. And community development is no different. And I think we need to continue to adjust our mindset and our approach to take the same level of seriousness and professionalism toward our community development that we do toward our economic and professional development in the city of Virginia because they are inextricably linked. And I think this is in a great example of investment in community development.
Okay, Jennifer, and then Sabrina.
I apologize for being late, but I was following along online and I support this effort and I don't mean this in any kind of condescending way, but I wonder the cost of this and like the number of studies that we funded for various things that could have otherwise gone into community investment. So our neighborhoods that are underserved, kids need something to do, that need jobs, that would get professional development, youth development, community development, all of this growth, I think it's one of our biggest investments. So I know that we, I think that this is a good use of public funds because it's going back into the community. It's a, it's a human investment. And so I know I'm late to the conversation, but just want to share my two cents on that. Love to support seeing this go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sperma.
I did hear the support around the table. It's a lot of support for this item. But just going back to the data, I remember listening to the workshop, April 23rd of this year. If you go back to the video in a workshop, the video stopped at two dash zero four. That's where we had a discussion about Parks After Dark and the next two sites that the police department and Parks and Rec discussed. And it was very clear, it was Green Run and Level Green because that's what the data shows in terms of the, the violence and, and so on, things that are happening within those communities. Case in point, the chief, when he was here and he was discussing the stats for violence, he said there were seven, I believe it was murders or shootings, I believe it was murders, two of them, well, we had seven, two happened in Level Green. So that's almost 30% of the murders that occurred this year. And so just giving you facts, just giving you data. So if you're basing your, your consent to move forward with this item based on the data or facts, some of the facts show, number one, that it's needed in Level Green, as was mentioned in Green Run. If you want to go back to that workshop, you can look at what they said or what Mr. Kirschman said during that time. And that suggestion was based off conversations with the police department about the level of crime in those areas, in fact. So it's, and it's data that the police certainly made reference to starting and expanding this program there. So I would just say, just to kind of wrap this up, is there anyone who is against moving forward with expanding the program in Level Green?
No, no one is actively against it. We're just looking at the options.
Good. I just want to make, I just want to bring, well, I'm bringing up Ross Hammond, Councilmember Ross Hammond, because the staff needs clear direction on what we want and I want to make sure they have clear direction from this body because there's so much positive responses and support around the table that they have a clear understanding of how to proceed. Thank you.
Yeah, work.
And let me just add too, because I think everyone agrees that we do support this program. And like what Councilwoman Ralph just said, we do incentivize economic development and Councilman Volusia as well. The business community, you all passed by 11 to zero vote last week, the freebie extension for a year, the study in the Central Resort, that's a $300,000 cost. So there are different needs around the city and this is back into the community and I fully support it.
No, I think, you know, trust me when I say this is important. You know, next month, we're going to have a meeting of the local 757 Mayor's Task Force and I intend to bring forward the success of the program. And I think what we think, we do agree on concept, but once again, the decision point comes down to the funding source. And I think that was the purpose of this. Yep, Rosemary?
And I again just want to tout the Youth Violence Task Force that I was on, that this idea came out of working with Michael and it's very good for me to see how successful it is and how much the council appreciates it. So that's exciting.
Yeah, Patrick.
So, Mr. Mayor, is it safe to say that it's, that it's okay for staff to move forward and bring in an item for consideration at the next appropriate voting meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be the best possible thing right now. But once again, I think, you know, the main purpose of this discussion was to discuss the options for where the potter's going to come from. You know, but once again, you know, the idea of a pilot is the hopes that it becomes permanent. And I think it's done that for Princess Anne, we're looking forward to that at Level Green and then we're also going to look forward at a Green Run. And then, you know, but once again, if we're going to build, I think Dr. Ross Hammond mentioned, we're going to build this throughout the city to do it segmentally because is this an expensive program? You better believe it. But is it well worth it? Because LA County is investing millions into this thing. And once again, it was time tested over, you know, such a long time. But I think the success of Williams Farm, you know, is a, you know, is a, is a good indicator of what we have to do to maybe get this. And once again, I think as, you know, Chris Taylor said, you know, the needs, you know, may adapt by, you know, the district, but we can certainly conform what we have to do, you know, to adapt to what we need. So, but you know, let's, let's celebrate our success and make it throughout as much of the city as we can. Is it costly? Yes. Is it worth it? Definitely.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, we'll take option two and we'll use that to craft the ordinance for council's consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, good discussion, folks.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, our Director of Planning, Kathy Warren, will come and give council a briefing on the Green Line. And this came about after several inquiries came across regarding development around the Green Line and council wanted to get a sense of the history and the context and some of the rules and regulations around the Green Line. So this is an informational briefing where we hope to inform council about the Green Line and to seek any, answer any questions that you all may have about the Green Line.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Mr. Manager. That was everything I was just going to say in the beginning, so thank you for hitting the high points for me. We are happy to bring an informational briefing to you today about the history of the Green Line. And I would like to quickly thank Hank Morrison, who's here with us today, our comprehensive planning administrator, who helped put this presentation together, but also thank you to Councilmember Henley, who spent some time answering some of our questions and providing more detail on the history in District Two of the Green Line. So just an overview of the presentation today. What is the Green Line? We'll talk about that. The land use south of the Green Line, the 1979 through the 2024 comprehensive plans and what they say about the Green Line. And then our current comprehensive plan update process, what public engagement is saying right now, what we're hearing from the public about the Green Line. And then we'll open it up for you for discussion. So what is the Green Line? In 1979, the city introduced the Green Line Urban Growth Management Tool to preserve Virginia Beach's rural area. Planning policies were established to channel growth and infrastructure improvements to the northern half of the city. The Green Line runs mainly along Princess Anne Road, as you'll see in this picture. So for land use south of the Green Line, first, I think it's important to note that the Green Line has not changed since it was first introduced in the 1979 comprehensive plan. We've heard over time, people suggest that the Green Line has been changed as the comprehensive plans have gone and we've found no indication of that. It still remains as it did back in those years. Below the Green Line, the Blue Line is located along Indian River Road and identifies the area where public utilities end. Princess Anne Commons and the Transition Area are located between the Green and Blue Line. Examples of development below the Green Line are the Municipal Center, Innovation Park, which has a lot of light industrial development, and several residential communities like Heritage Park, Sherwood Lakes, and Courthouse Estates, to name a few. In the Transition Areas, zoning for residential development is typically one unit per acre with 50% open space and for non-residential, 30% open space and 10,000 square foot building footprint requirements. In the ITA, zoning is typically, or is, one unit per 15 acres and the preferred land uses are identified in the ITA and Vicinity Plan of 2017. The Transition Area Design Guidelines provide guidance for the Municipal Center, Punggau Village, and Historic Nemo Church. And this is a map, I've put a hard copy in front of you all because it may be hard to read on the screen, but you can clearly see here to the north is the Green Line along Princess Anne Road. The Blue Line is the boundary to the south. The Red Line is showing the Transition Area, which again, you'll probably The Red Line is showing the Transition Area, which again, you'll probably be able to see a little bit better on the hard copy in front of you. That purple line through the middle is the ITA, and then all of the yellow parcels that you see are city-owned property. So the 1979 Plan, shown here on the right, is one of the first exhibits from this plan. This is the first Comprehensive Plan, and this shows the delineation of the agriculture and urban uses. The term "Green Line" was not specifically mentioned, but land use policies were introduced to discourage the extension of urban infrastructure into agricultural areas. A border was established between single-family development to the north and then the agricultural uses to the south. The Green Line in 1985 was formally established here on this map. Virginia Beach was rapidly urbanizing in the southern direction and therefore urbanizing beyond available infrastructure. So the strategy was to minimize conflicts between those incompatible uses. The Green Line is referred to as not a permanent feature, but subject to change as conditions change related to adequacy of facilities north of the Green Line. This should be evaluated by annually, that's what the 1985 Plan states, and the following considerations should be taken into account: availability of capital improvements funding, ability to provide adequate facilities for any demand, citywide growth rate, and then availability of developable land north of the Green Line. In the 1985 Plan, it recommends that rezoning for density increases were discouraged and residential density was not recommended, and that agricultural areas should not be subject to residential expansion unless conditions warrant moving the Green Line. That's all in the 1985 Plan. So on to the 1991 Plan, it states that the need to move the Green Line for the sake of residential expansion does not now exist. Since the Green Line was established, it helped the city address the backlog of roadway needs to the north, but we're not yet at the point where CIP funding should be directed for projects south of the Green Line. However, commitments from developers to pay for the installation of public utilities as part of conditional rezoning applications were now permitted. And then again, in the 1991 Comprehensive Plan, it recommended that the Green Line should not be removed, should not be moved or adjusted. On to the 1997 Comprehensive Plan, the strategy was to maintain the Green Line and continue to successfully direct CIP funds to projects north of the Green Line. Further, policies were implemented to not spend CIP funds south of the Green Line except to support the rural population and development that would expand the tax base and amenity base and do not encourage growth that would rely on public facilities. The 2003 Comprehensive Plan continues to support that the Green Line remain where it is, and it maintains its role as the defender of sprawl to the south. And then for the first time, you'll see in the 2003 Plan, the term redevelopment is used as a key strategy moving forward in the northern part of the city, which will protect the rural area. This is where you first start to hear the concept of the strategic growth areas. And then this strategy enables the city to gain maximum effect from CIP funds direct to the north area of the Green Line. The 2003 Plan reiterates that the Green Line is not intended to prevent investments that would assist with basic health, safety, and welfare of the citizens in the area, and that because Princess Anne Commons is south of the Green Line and provides great level of benefits to the residents of the city, it needs to be supported with adequate facilities to accommodate the development in this area. On to the 2009 Comprehensive Plan, again, the strategy remains to maintain the Green Line, reiterating that the boundary separates the more urbanized area of the city from Princess Anne Commons, the Transition Area, and the rural area. The 2016 Plan, the strategy again, remains to maintain the Green Line as a growth management strategy. We have a need to reevaluate the capacity of the area south of the Green Line to accommodate development as new revelations about changing environmental conditions and how we can develop land sustainably have come to light. High groundwater table, flooding, those things have changed development calculus in the southern area of Virginia Beach. Planning and resourcing public infrastructure to support continued strategic economic development in Princess Anne Commons is a high priority. And then density in the Transition Area is strategically lower than the north of the Green Line, but not as low as the rural area south of Indian River Road. And then to today, for our current Comprehensive Plan update, we're calling this the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, although we are proposing that adoption take place in 2024 calendar year or early 2025. Current feedback is strong that the Green Line should be maintained, and strategies should include balanced growth, build up, not out, focus new development and redevelopment in SGAs along major corridors and established centers. We should preserve rural and agricultural land and enhance natural areas. Again, that's the feedback that we're receiving on the new plan. Staff and the consulting team are continuing to work on policies for the planning areas, and we're hoping to clarify and condense recommendations for the rural and transition area to avoid any conflicts in those areas. And then the goal is to find a happy medium, to identify areas that can provide additional economic development opportunities while advancing parks and recreation initiatives and introducing innovative stormwater solutions. And so with that, we will open it for discussion.
Hey, any questions or discussion?
Will you back up that one slide?
Sure.
So, when you talk about the strategies in the plan, that's for the overall plan, not for just the Green Line?
Correct.
Okay, I just, because I was thinking building up.
Right, now, strategies that citywide.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anybody else? Amelia?
I just want to ask, each segment was gone from where it started to now. We continue to say maintain the Green Line, but in actuality, certain things have changed.
So, when I said it did not change, the actual boundary did not change?
Just the boundary.
Correct.
You know, lots more development and so forth has been happening.
Yes.
Especially where you mentioned that some of the developers are willing to pay money to put those infrastructures in. So, how do we value that? Is it comfortable continually having more development done in there? Or are the people really trying to look at what you have now, balance the growth, and focus on how we do what we do, more than just for development's sake?
Right, so the current, well, we're saying, we're hearing maintain the Green Line and keep density lower south of the Green Line. And our zoning allows for a lower density there. We are hearing to focus our higher-density areas, specifically within areas like the strategic growth areas and along those major corridors.
Okay, oh, work.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, thank you, Ms. Warren, for the presentation. And I just focused on the last point there and ask you and also colleagues around the table here, maybe not for today, but the goal here, and this is my first Comprehensive Plan, the goal here is to find a happy medium, to identify areas that can provide additional economic development opportunities while advancing parks and recreation initiatives and introducing innovative stormwater solutions. That's a lofty goal, given where we are, and I just maybe could ask you quickly, what would you identify as economic development opportunities?
So, in particular, in this area and other areas of the city, we're looking for the ability to identify areas that can expand our industry, our light industrial offerings. Economic development, the department will continue to tell you that they've got people lined up at the door that want to expand their businesses, but we don't have those larger parcels for light industrial development to offer. So if we can identify some of those, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you recall, as part of the Focus Action Plan, one of the direction to us was for us to identify properties for such a use and then bring those back for council, for council's discussion and consideration. So that's going on as part of this process as well.
Okay, oh, work. Josh, Barbara.
Just a quick add-on and up, I ask this for a variety of reasons, but one, and I said this in the Economic Development Authority meeting a couple of weeks ago, is I am in the industrial real estate world, and I am aware at this point of six existing Virginia Beach companies, existing companies, some are household names, that right now are looking outside of our city for industrial land for expansion, not for new business to town. So it's a, it's a goal that's going to be tough to find, but I think the challenge is before us.
Hey, Josh and Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Warren, thank you very much. I've got a couple of questions for you. One, I was, I was heard it put to me this way, like, so never will there be utilities extended south of the Blue Line, but south of the Green Line, no new subdivisions and no new, I guess, utilities extended just only to support residential development? Is that, is that kind of a fair summary? But if somebody wants to pay, if a developer wants to pay to have utilities extended, then, then we would entertain such a thing? Is that kind of, I mean, I know that's a really simple way of putting it, but I'm just kind of trying to wrap my head around, if there was, if there was something, either residential or commercial, to go in south of the Green Line, but north of the Blue Line, we won't pay to extend public infrastructure, but they could.
And that came from that one specific plan. That's when that concept was first introduced. We were not going to pay for it, but we would then, when they were coming in for rezoning applications, and they wanted to go ahead to pay for those infrastructure extensions, if they paid for it, it would be considered as part of that rezoning.
Yeah, and I know that there have been several subdivisions, like Courthouse Estates is one of them, that was like kind of grandfathered in under whatever they had been approved of before, so they got, they got a subdivision down below the Green Line. And this one that is down the street here, that they're, they're looking to do, right at the corner, Eaton, the old Eaton Hardware Building or whatever. So, was that also grandfathered? Like, where, where are these other grandfathered properties that, that, that could still have potential to be developed south of the Green Line? Where do those exist?
So we'd have to get you more detail on that. I don't have that off the top, but happy to identify those types of sites.
Okay, Barbara, and then Chris.
Well, this is just scratching the surface of the history since the Green Line. And of course, when we talk about the properties that were grandfathered in, you need to realize that some of these properties were already zoned for residential before the Green Line was established. And the City Council did in 1986 attempt to downzone those properties back to agricultural, but of course, the court did not allow that. And so, those properties were allowed to come back in and ask for, they weren't automatically given their rights back, but they were allowed to come in, and that's what Courthouse Estates did. A fox fire had gotten in under the line, and they were able to develop. And so, when somebody says, well, there's development below the Green Line, you really have to understand everything that's going on since the city was, was created. And, but of course, the attempt has been to be able to control the development so that it wasn't just absolute sprawl and the city having to extend services all the way to the North Carolina Line. That was just not something that would even have been possible. And when we look at what the cost of infrastructure is today, it seems like it's even less possible now than it was then. Look at how much it costs to replace a high school now. I mean, I remember when we created the Agriculture Reserve Program and we, we had just recently, I think, built Ocean Lakes, and it was, I think, $60 million to build that high school. And, and so we compared, well, if we can just prevent needing one high school, we have paid for the Agriculture Reserve Program. Okay, but look at what a high school costs now. $60 million is more what you're talking about, an elementary school. So when you're talking about the, the ability to provide the services, that's what has been the reason behind this to begin with, recognizing that the services would not be able to be provided if we just sprawled all the way out. I have here just sections of the JLU study, a joint land use study that was developed by the, by the Navy in 2005, and it's amazing how much they talk about the city's land use policies when they were determining whether or not they were going to keep Oceana. Here we are today, talking about wanting more jets. Well, when they were looking at whether or not they were going to even keep Oceana here, they were very much concerned about the city's land use policies, particularly in that area that was involved the flyway. Of course, they created and named the ITA, that wasn't a thing that the city came up with, that's a good old Navy expression. But in their, in their JLU study, the Transition, Princess Anne and Transition Area, and this is just one paragraph, it's over and over and over in here, created to provide a gradient of development options and densities between the existing development in the north and rural areas in the south. The Princess Anne area is one where limited new services and utilities will help provide such a buffer. The city identified this area and established the Green Line as growth management tools to prevent the extension of capital improvements and utilities into rural areas to the south. And it goes on and on, and this is repeated over and over again, when the Navy was determining whether or not to keep Virginia Beach here. Now, what if we had lost the Navy? What kind of economic development hit would we have taken then? But it was an extremely important element in, in Oceana staying here. And, you know, I have to go through this every now and then to convince people that agriculture is economic development too. I mean, all these years, we've been working 12-hour days, I thought we were working, but somebody's going to tell me, well, that's just economic, I mean, that's not, that's not economic development, that's no good. Our agricultural, we are farms, every one of these farms is a business, and I am so tired of hearing this comparison, it's not economic development, we've got to have economic development, we've got to develop in the south. Well, what in the dickens do you think all of these farms are? They're businesses, we're not doing it for fun. And it's a part of our economic development. Last Saturday night, the 4-H Livestock Club held its annual awards banquet. Over $200,000 was distributed to those young people for the work of their projects during the year. Now, not one dime of that was a handout, it was all earned by those young people because they had to set up their businesses to handle their animals, and they had to keep track of their finances, their businesses, what they had done and what they had not done. And that money, which was distributed, came from farm businesses, large and small, and from individuals who were sponsors of these young people to help them learn the agricultural industry. We talk about economic development, and I read that very long article that was in the Beach Business or whatever it is, and not one mention of agriculture in all of that article in talking about the economic development in this city. It's as if we don't count. The livestock is only one component of the agricultural industry. Look at our grain-buying businesses, we have two major grain elevators. Look at our grain buying businesses. We have two major grain elevators. And, and their investment is comparable to just about anything else we've got in the city. You, you look at other types of agriculture, whether it's row crops or produce or fruits or landscaping. There are many different kinds of agricultural businesses. And it's about time we got counted and recognized as economic development. We're not out there for the fun of it. I ride down Princess Anne Road down to North Carolina and I see businesses all along the way. I don't see an open soybean field waiting to be developed. I see somebody's farm. I see their business. And all of these businesses, I think, need some attention and need some appreciation because they are contributing to this city in a very fine way. And that's why we're hearing from our people that they like to be in a city, a city that is like Virginia Beach, that you can be in a very heavily dense area and just drive a few miles and you're out in the fresh air. Because we've helped provide this kind of quality of life for our people, to give our people open spaces, to create fresh air. We take care of our drainage. It helps to take care of the drainage because that open field is going to absorb a lot more water than a, a concrete area is going to. So I really would like for us to start thinking about the agricultural industry. You know, it would have been really nice to have had some of you at the, at the program Saturday night to see these kids, to hear what they had written. Would have been good to have somebody from our Economic Development Department there or the Economic Development Agency. It's about time we started recognizing the value. And I came away feeling very good about the future of agriculture when I saw these kids and all that they had produced. And they were able to receive over $200,000 in payment for their work over the last year. That is the agricultural industry helping to teach the next generation. That's what it's all about. And I, I think that it's, it's time that we started giving some thought to the fact that this is not just open space. It's not just land waiting to be developed. It's already got a pretty dag on good use. And wait until we're having to buy our farm, our food from China. And then we'll begin to appreciate the fact that we've got a nation that's an exporter in agricultural industry, not an importer. We don't want to be an importer. So this is my soapbox for the moment, but I would really like to have someone start to recognize that we are an industry, we are businesses, and we're a value to the city. And not just a part of the city that's waiting to be kicked out so that you can put more concrete and build more buildings. I don't think that's what the people are telling you.
Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Councilman, Councilwoman Henley, I couldn't agree more. I was down in the county this weekend buying some produce for the family. They enjoy all of the freshness that it provided. I'm, I guess the conversation's really about the green line, but in your answer, Ms. Henry, I mean, Mrs. Warren, light industrial, as I've sat here 16, 17 months, I mean, I don't see many opportunities coming before us in terms of economic development. And so is it, I don't know, is it wise to, to have a goal that we, we really haven't been able to achieve or accomplish? I see, when you look at the last 50, 40 million dollars that we've given out, it has not gone to what I would describe as light industrial, but more so what we're considering today, redevelopment of apartments, private developments, private restaurants, private headquarters, millions and millions of dollars. And so if we know we have limited land, I've asked the manager for a map, I've looked at the map, we know where the land is. What is your hurdle? Why can't our economic development team achieve the goal?
I think I would definitely defer to the economic development team on that, but I think it doesn't make it to the point of further discussion if we don't have a large enough parcel of land that a developer or business may need to develop. So it never makes it past that point.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else at this point? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Morgan Hawn.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, HR Director Monica Kofin is going to come and give a council presentation on the market salary survey scope. And if City Council recalls as part of reconciliation, City Council provided direction for staff to conduct the market salary survey. And we have a proposed scope that we want to bring forward to council to garner feedback and also guidance as it relates to next steps.
Hey, Morgan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Appreciate your time today. As the city manager indicated, we're here today to talk about the market salary survey. I keep saying upcoming fiscal year, but it's July 2nd. So in this fiscal year, we're going to be conducting a market salary survey. Get this moving. So we wanted to talk to you a little bit about the, how this process is going to proceed, what the timeline's going to be, get a little bit of clarification from what you expect to see out of the market salary survey, and then go into a timeline for what the deliverables are. So we are fortunate, the city has identified a cooperative agreement with the Siegel Group to perform the 2024 market salary survey. And what this means is it provides us with an opportunity to, for lack of a better term, piggyback on another agreement in the Commonwealth to do these services. And we used Siegel Group, the Siegel Group in 2021, so they already have a baseline knowledge of what our comp system is. They actually created the step plan for the city, so they have a pretty good feel for what our classifications are and what good matches would be in the market. And we think that's going to really help us as we move forward. So with that, Siegel has requested some guidance on some of the project specifics. And as the manager mentioned today, we're going to get some confirmation on the recommendations that we're making and then get any kind of additional feedback and guidance from the council. So before we go into the information that Siegel has requested that we're looking for guidance on, wanted to talk to you a little bit about what has happened in 2022 to how we got here today. So the last market salary survey was conducted in 2021, the fall of 2021, and it was implemented July 1st. Prior to that, we had not had a market salary survey since 2011. So it was actually a total compensation study that we had requested, and it was including pay, benefits, leave, our compensation structure, our pay policies, do we have promotional policies that reflect a competitive nature in the market? Are we paying incentives or supplements that are representative in the market and that would make the city a competitive place to work? And then we were coming right off of the pandemic too, so we wanted to make sure our flexible work policies were, were up to date. So after that had, we had gotten the information, I believe Siegel Group came to the city council in January during the council retreat to deliver their results of the survey. But a little thing called the Great Resignation happened in between the time that they actually gathered the data and when they delivered it to city council. So we very quickly realized in that January, February timeframe, as all of, particularly private sector employers, but as employers were reacting to what had happened in the fall of 2021, that the data that we had gathered was fast becoming less relevant. So we had identified places that we needed to do some work, but it didn't quite capture everything because we were facing a severe labor shortage. And at that time, city council did request in reaction to that the development of a step plan and the establishment of the minimum hourly rate of $15 an hour. So Siegel, by the beginning of July 1, they had incorporated the market salary information, the step plan, and establishing that $15 an hour for us to be implemented on July 1. And then I just, you know, just as a reference, employees received a minimum of 5%. So all employees got a minimum of 5% increase, but the average was probably closer to 9% by the time we placed them on steps. So, and then the cost of the general fund at that time was 32.8 million. It was probably about 35, all said and done. So what are we doing right now? What have we been doing in the past two years since 2022? We're continuing to right-size the compensation structure to reflect that $15 an hour as step one of the lowest range. When we place people on the step plan at $15 an hour, sometimes we had to place them in the middle of the range to accomplish that. So ideally, in a comp structure, you're going to want your minimum hourly rate to be step one of your lowest range, that you're not furthering compression across your, across your system. At that time, local market cities, except for Norfolk, they were a little bit higher. They were all having minimum rates of about $15 an hour too. But since then, they have somewhat increased their, their minimum rates, and we'll see that in a second. And then we also are at a place where we have quite a few positions that are hard to fill. Things are better than they were certainly two years ago, but we continually have some kind of, some occupational values that have shifted over time. And a lot of that's due to the changes in the economy and then changes in our culture too. So in the past, you would have a structure that had maybe technicians and skilled trades at one level and your professionals a little bit higher. But over time, when people were going to college and maybe not going into trades quite so much, we got to a point where we weren't replacing our labor market. So the trades are now probably moving up to more of a comparable pay than some of our professional level positions too. And that's a structural thing that we will probably have to deal with at some point. Those positions, the trade positions remain very hard to fill. So the total rewards philosophy that the city's deployed is to be competitive in the market. I think Councilmember Hutch referenced a philosophy that we've had in the past to be the highest paid in the Hampton Roads area. And that was something that we operated under for quite a long time, was to be the highest paid in the Hampton Roads area. And that was what we were operating under when I first got here. But about 2008, we, when some of our real estate revenue dropped, we decided to, hey, we really want to make sure that we're competitive. And that was just the economic reality of what we were operating under, was that we wanted to be competitive. But we knew that based on what was happening, we may not be able to be the highest paid in the, in Hampton Road, Hampton Road, sorry. So the competitive definition is that we are 5% between the comparable midpoints of, so if you have an account at one, we want our midpoint of our account at one to be within 5% of an account at one in other market cities. That's, that's how that, that philosophy works. Over time, you can, you can base your competitive rate on the minimums, but since we don't start employees at the minimum of a range too often anymore, except in certain occupations, that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. And you can also use the, the maximum if you're going to have a comparable pay range span as other municipalities. But that's a little bit harder to predict because those can be, those can change or be pretty fluid. So we, we use the midpoint. So some of the considerations that we want to speak to today or we want to talk about today is what do we want as a city for our market position to be? Do we want to meet the market? Do we want to exceed the market? Do, is the survey scope that we used in the past, is that what we want to continue to have Siegel operate under the same premise this time? Or do we want to add to that? And then do we want to utilize the same market comparables that we've used in the 2021 survey? Or do we want to expand that, that grouping? So, like I said, our current philosophy is that we seek to be competitive. We recommend that we retain this position. And I gave you a kind of a chart, I think it was in the CCSR as well. This is a perfect example of what is happening across the entire pay system. So you can see that our full-time minimum hourly rate may not be quite as competitive as we would like. But our part-time minimum hourly rate is, does look to be competitive in the local market anyway. So where do we need to, where do we need to make some, some choices and some work? And that, like I said, that's what you'll see across the entire organization, that some positions are, are really not meeting the market rate and then some are actually competitive right now. The other thing that we were going to recommend and seek a little bit of guidance on was the, the project scope. As I mentioned last time, we did pay, we did benefits. When I say benefits, I'm not talking about plan design because I will tell you that's a completely different project. What I mean is, is it's employee premiums, employee deductibles, and the employee cost for our health plans. We included annual leave, sick leave, paid time off. And like I said earlier, do we have the correct amount of leveling in our organization? So for a, an organization of our size, so do we, is it right to have three levels of an account clerk? Or should we have five? Or, so we want to make sure that our comp plan structure was competitive. And then also our policies too, is a 5% or 10% increase with a promotion really the average or the norm. So. And then this year, we, we had just named off a few of the additional considerations that we thought we might include. And that was some questions around the FIRE Work Week. That's something that we get feedback on. There's some private sector data that we continually get asked. The reality is that in the past, we were maybe trying to be competitive with other municipalities. We can't, we can't limit ourselves to that anymore. So we really need to make sure for most occupations, not every occupation, that we are looking at some private sector data to be competitive. And then we also have some retirement pay. Our retirement pay for sick leave has been $28 a day for, I don't know, it's been a long time. I've been here 22 years and it's been that. So we, employees are constantly giving us some feedback relative to that. They, they would like to have that, that revised. And then also, we wanted to look and see what is the first line of public safety structure that is eligible for overtime or not eligible for overtime? When do they become exempt? And get some feedback on that. And then the last thing that we had looked at and that we're recommending for now to keep is that these were the market comparators that Siegel utilized in the last market salary survey. As I mentioned, they included some private sector data, but I do really want them to expand on that this time and provide that data a little bit separately. And we had asked them last time for some information from the federal pay scales as well. The groupings in Virginia are a combination of local municipalities and municipalities that are of similar size or structure. We tried to create a mix of departments that maybe had a separate EMS and FIRE department. When we looked at some of the cities outside of Virginia, we looked at their population. At that time, we had considered some cities that had a separate CBB because that's a little bit of a rare mix in a municipality. So we were going to move forward with this market comparator, but we wanted to get some feedback from you all as well because again, we want to make sure that this market salary survey is capturing what you would like for it to capture. And that is what I, and I'll go back to this piece here. If there's any kind of guidance, questions, discussion, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, let's open it up. Anybody? Hutch?
That was good how you said a couple of those things. I like that.
Okay.
Feedback on the sick leave. That's good. We definitely know.
A little bit of feedback.
Yeah, there's been a little bit. You did a great job. I know you, we're doing, you know, we're trying to put our best foot forward, so I appreciate it. So just to start with, thanks for the 56 to 52 for hearing us on that. That's, that's only fair to compare the apples and apples. I'm talking about the hours there. That's the only thing I'm going to say about FIRE, but I think that's a good, I think that's a good thing. It's, it's just fair. And then, so the, the starting salary is always good, but the top out salary matters as well. And then, and Regina and I used to talk about this quite a bit and we were in agreement is, and I say this humbly, well, really humbly, because it took me, when I maxed out on my pay, was on my 34th year in six months. It was six months before I retired. So most of us would say that that's probably 15 years too long till you get to maxing out in your salary. You know, I'd gone that, that far. That's just me. It, it happens across the board in, across the city. You know, people worked 42 years and they say they didn't max. You know, I know there's, somewhere lies in the middle, but I can speak, I can speak for me. And so I know it happens, is what I'm saying. So does that make sense what I'm trying to say, that the time from you start to the time you should max out? I know there's going to be some variables.
Yeah, we, we can definitely have Siegel look at that. I mean, I think there's a few variables with their comp structure that we might want to look at. We know that Siegel had recommended that we move this, this spread from like a 45% between minimum and maximum to 55%. So we, we elongated the range, which is what we needed to do. We needed to raise that maximum. But that doesn't necessarily correspond with when you reach your pay range maximum. There's a couple of factors, you know, if they recommend again that we elongate our, our range, and they may because they, actually the average was 65%. It may mean that there's more earning potential, but I don't know that it's going to change the timeline that you write.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a give and take on that, but yeah.
Yeah, so if you retire before you reach it, it does you no good, right? So, okay. So the, the market position, this is one thing that I can speak to, as a lot of us have been. I've spoken to, because of having to run the last election and all that, I had, I've spoke to a lot of folks. And then I've done a lot of town halls here recently. I, I keep track, so I learned this a long time ago, to keep track of the number of people on I keep track, so I learned this a long time ago, to keep track of the number of people I'm talking about. And I'm up around 500 that I've asked this question to. And I say it very clearly, where do you want your city employees to fall in the seven cities? I just say the seven cities. I know that's not perfect, but it's just easier to say it that way. And almost to a person, I either get number one said, or they hold up their first finger. And I say, okay, are you saying number one? You're not talking about number three, you're not talking about number six, you're talking about number one. And so that's what they are saying back to me. At least 400 out of the 500 are saying that. That's not anecdotal. That is real numbers that I'm keeping track of. So, and they'll, I'd say, okay, are you trying to keep it competitive? Like, maybe if we fall to number three, then we're going to try to get to number one? I would tell you that at least 25 to 30% say we're Virginia Beach. We should be the best paid. Everybody should be following us, not the other way around. I'm not saying it's necessarily even achievable, but that is what the constituents of District 1 in Kimpsville are clearly telling me. And I got to believe that's going to be across the board. So the the survey scope, obviously, we got to look at that as far as where you think the best practices are. And I think it's somewhere in the middle. And then the market comparators, that list I saw looked pretty solid, you know, for me. So, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. In terms of the market position, I don't, I haven't kept a specific track, like Councilman Hutch, but spoken to a lot of constituents as well as employees. For the minimum rate, it's, it's interesting. I know it's interesting because four of the seven cities, three, Portsmouth, Suffolk, and Chesapeake are flat on their minimum in their, well, part-time, full-time. And then you start seeing Norfolk, you said, took it, took the top spot. They increased by $4.56, which in typical, most small businesses, there's a difference between part-time and full-time work to commitment. Hampton is 75 cents and Newport News is 75 cents. And so I'm not sure how competitive we are, even at the minimum rate, when I'm out talking to the guys on the street that are doing the, some of the toughest work. Right now, just in comparison, wah-wah, this is just in Virginia Beach, starting out 1489. And if you want to do a little harder work, you can get 1544. Wegmans, number four grocer, top 10 in the nation, 1530, just to stand in the air conditioning being cashier. And if you want to do some hard work, you can get up to 2595 part-time. And so these men and women, we talked about community development earlier around the table. We're going to be voting tonight for 22 million for economic development. I just don't understand, and the manager's quote, when we had this conversation, was if we did this survey, there would be an expectation that our employees would be getting a raise. And again, when I just do some simple math, we've given away millions and millions of dollars in economic development. Yet, our biggest asset are people. Many of them, you'll, you're going to hear people around tables, that they're happy. I haven't heard many come and say, you know, they're really just excited about working 15, 16, 17 years. And they they can't cap out our Public Works, Public Utilities, they want to be on par for the retirement. I think some departments are 25 years, and then there's others that are either 35, 30. So I think we, we should be number one if we're investing hundreds of millions of dollars in different economic development projects that, to this day, have not brought back those millions of dollars back to the the general fund. For the FIRE, we just received an email from Max Canano, everybody received that email. I asked the former chief, Councilmember, Councilmember Hutch, why can't we just resolve that? Is that something the council could just change with a vote? Or does that have to go through the General Assembly? Why can't we address that? And so I think we should be number one, because we're probably the number one in spending for private development projects. Number two was, what was your number two consideration, survey scope? I think those are pretty good, even though we know we're struggling with the CDLs, Mr. Manager. So if we had to go private, and then retirement pay, that's fine. And then 2024 market comparators, I guess that list is is fine. But we, we're number five right now locally for the full-time. So I don't think we have to go too far out of market to to realize that 1536. I know you said we don't hire many at the minimum rate. Do you know what average rate we are hiring in that?
It varies. I should say that compete, to be competitive across the city, on average, we don't. But for some of those entry-level positions that are not skilled labor, they probably do start closer to that 1536, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. Just two quick questions about the scope. I saw before, it was great that you included enough of pay, but but also benefits and healthcare and premiums and leave and all of that. I'm just wondering, maybe, maybe there are some other things that might be of value besides just cost money. So, well, I guess everything kind of does at the end of the day. But I mean, like work from home benefits, those kinds of things. I know in that email that Councilmember Taylor referenced the stipends for continuing education advancement have, I guess, remained somewhat flat despite increasing costs, you know, to to take those courses. So I don't know if that's true or not, but.
We can include like tuition reimbursement amounts, too. We can look at, because we have a tuition reimbursement policy, we can include, like, are we providing an attractive, competitive tuition reimbursement policy? Because it's based on credit hour. That's something I think we could probably look at pretty easily.
I know, you know, and I know people, we have like FMLA, they could take care of people, our dependents. But, you know, we've got, you know, sometimes extended family living in our house that don't necessarily fall into the category of somebody who, you know, you could justifiably take leave for. So, so just, just things like that where where maybe, you know, that that go to the the quality, you know, of the the experience and and kind of the the overall support that we provide, you know, just pay and benefits. And then as far as the market comparators, a great list. I guess the only question I would ask is, where, where are we, are we losing people to these places? And if, maybe, maybe, maybe if we look at it from that prism, too, is where, where else are people going? That we need to make sure that we're grabbing on to them.
We, we are, and that's some of, that's some of the rationale in that list is, you know, are we losing people to Richmond and Rico County? Virginia Beach Public Schools, are we losing them to other localities? And it depends on the occupation. The answer may be yes for, to to your point that, like a CDL driver. But it may not be necessarily true for like a civil engineer. That might be more along the lines of comparable cities outside of Virginia that that we're more likely to lose a worker like that. So we did use a combination of them.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else at this time? Yes, Sabrina.
A couple of things that I have heard from staff and others about pay and those sorts of things center around, I know one is retirement. And so just really considering how, I guess, across the board, other cities, or just in general, if you want to broaden it up. Because some of our, some staff who work in maybe waste management, public utilities and those areas look at perhaps, or want to look at perhaps retiring at maybe 25 years versus what the retirement rate is now because of the hazardous material they handle and because of the dangers of their job. And so they're inhaling, some staff members and employees have told me how they have to inhale these toxic chemicals, and they have an adverse effect on their health. And so they may want to retire at 25 years versus, I can't remember the specific amount versus the the timeframe that they have to retire now. So that's something perhaps we can look at. That is certainly a concern that I've heard about. Also, in terms of stipends, we were talking about certainly having a robust program for our education, educational stipends. And also some medical stipends as well, or medical license stipends. Are we making sure that they're keeping in line with inflation? Because I know specifically where I work at ODU, tuition goes up and it keeps going up. So just making sure we're keeping in line with inflation and increasing prices there as well. I think that's mostly some of the concerns that I have had. Talked to a young man a couple of weeks ago who used to work in, I believe it was waste management. And he just shared with me that he was actually trying to follow in the footsteps of his father. His father had been there for many years, I think a couple of decades, trying to follow in the footsteps of his father. And he just said to me, you know, Ms. Wooton, I tried, he said, but the wages are just not competitive. So we might want to look at those low-level areas or the areas of waste management, public utilities, but specifically waste management. Because we have a lot of good folks there who are working there, but they can't make ends meet. It's not competitive, and they're doing yeoman's work. And so I, just in that conversation having with that young man, it certainly really resonated with me. He's no longer with us. He went to another company. I think they paid him a few dollars more, maybe three to $4 more than what he was making. But he said to me, I really wanted to stay, and he's not alone. There are several other young, vibrant staff members who are working in those areas, and they want to start a career there. But it's not keeping up with inflation, it's not competitive, and they just go elsewhere. So that's the feedback that I'm hearing, and certainly hopeful that we can take that into account with another salary study.
Hey, anybody else at this point? No, I think, yeah, Rosemary.
So speaking of retirement, please correct me if I'm wrong here, and Hutch, you should know this. I believe teachers and public safety can retire at 50 if they have 25 years with VRS. Is that correct?
Public safety, certainly. I can't speak to teachers.
Teachers, too.
Public safety at 25 years, and then with VRS, the rest are 30 years and 50.
So that's not controlled by us. It's really controlled by VRS.
VRS.
Okay. Sabrina?
And so when I made that statement, I was talking about waste management. They were mentioning, mentioning to me that they want to retire earlier, sooner, maybe more than 25 years because of the toxics, toxic chemicals that they're inhaling. And they feel like if they have to continue to stay on further, it's detrimental to their health.
That's controlled by the state, correct?
Our VRS, our retirement program is.
And I guess what I was alluding to is perhaps we can study, include that information in the study to see how we can address that in the future. Because this is what our staff is asking us to do. So if we're going to do another study, let's include that information.
We can definitely look at retirement eligibility.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? I think it's incredibly important, especially in today's, you know, economic market, that, you know, we do be market competitive, you know, with all. And, you know, especially with some public safety, you know, once again, we're also recruiting nationally, you know, for our folks. And we have to take that into consideration as we look, you know, in terms of recruitment and retention. So I think that's key, but, you know, I tell you what, you know, satisfaction is high on our priority list. And, you know, we have to adapt to changing times. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just made a note, we'll make a note of the changes that some comp members had on the scope and also the market comparators. And then it sounds like we're going to remain competitive as it relates to the marketing position or the position.
Yeah, I think that would be great. It would be a good guide. Thank you very much. Okay, any liaison reports at this point? Okay, how about council comments? Jennifer?
Yes, I just want to shout out a number of groups that hosted Cookout at the Canal on Saturday. It was in Twin Canal Village. So Pastor Bobby White and Christ Regeneration Church, Vicki Mitchell and United in Him, Crossing the Bridge Foundation, Chief Nutigate, the BBD, Sergeant Chris Washington, and then a number of officers joined us. Sheriff Holcomb, it was his birthday, but he came and spent some time with us at Twin Canal. KJ and the Sheriff's Office, Norris Sherman and Noble HR, which is the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement, and the Twin Canal Village Team. So it was a, all of these organizations collaborated to provide free ice cream, bounce house, fun. It was very hot, but everybody was drinking water and eating ice cream, and I think they were okay. So I just want to thank them for their efforts to support this community, and thank you.
Okay. I think Michael and then Amelia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a quick note to say that on Sunday, I had the privilege to attend the Bellamy Manor Estates Fourth of July Independence Day Celebration along with members of our public safety team, the FIRE Department, EMS, Sheriff's Department, as well as Sheriff Holcomb and Councilmember Hutchinson. And it was a really, really wonderful, family-friendly, fun, community-connected event, and then the rain came. But even that didn't diminish our enthusiasm for being together as neighbors and as members of our, this community and this city. And this really, to me, exemplified one of the many outstanding things about Virginia Beach is how our neighborhoods step up and be connected and help each other and and be there to support each other. So to me, that was a great example of that spirit that's prevalent throughout our community. And I had a really great time, and I want to thank the Bellamy Manor Estates Civic League for hosting us and for organizing that great event.
Oh, thank you.
I also want to share that on July 18th, Thursday, July 18th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, I'll be hosting a District 3 community meeting with a focus on flood protection program update, as well as the, an update on the progress of the Bow Creek Stormwater Park. So that'll be at Winter Woods Elementary School, and I hope anyone who's watching or interested, or I'll be sharing information about this, will join us. And then finally, I just want to state that there has been a detour that has occurred inside District 3 that many of you are familiar with. South Plaza Trail will be closed from now until sometime, a portion of South Plaza Trail is closed from now until 2025. And this is a good thing, because it represents a continuation of development of the flood protection program and creating increased capacity to handle stormwater in that very sensitive neighborhood. So I'm happy to see this progress being made. But at the same time, the closure of South Plaza in that area has created stress on Rosemont Road and Selina Drive particularly, as well as on the intersection of Rosemont Road and South Plaza Trail. I've received many, many emails and phone calls and social media messages about the impact that the disclosure is having on people's commute and also on the traffic that's, that's occurring within the neighborhood. And I want to thank Traffic Operations for being responsive to make some adjustments in the light cycle and also to play, place a camera there that's going to monitor traffic. And then they'll, with the data they collect, they'll be able to make recommendations for change. But I want to ask the city manager and Mr. LJ Hanson from Public Works and Traffic Operations to continue to keep an eye on this. One of the things that I've heard is they like to see a turn signal at that light, which would, which in many people's minds would alleviate some of the delays. I don't know if that's possible, because I, I think you have to have a turn lane to have a turn signal. I don't know that we have the space at that light to have that. I don't know. But that's one thing I'd like you all to look into, and as well, just continue to to keep an eye on that. We're, we're glad to see, I know many people, including me, are thrilled to see the progress that's being made on South Plaza Trail with flood protection. And at the same time, these improvements come at a cost in terms of delays and even, in some cases, potentially safety. There's a lot of cars driving through the Winter Woods neighborhood and Prince San Plaza in certain areas that weren't previously. And a lot of kids playing around those streets, too, so it's something to keep an eye on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and then Amelia.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer.
I wanted to thank Ms. Emily LeBeau, Cultural Affairs Director, and her staff, along with Amory Riley-Kay, the History Museum Director over at Francis Land House. Last week, I had an opportunity to take a tour and was really surprised and impressed. I didn't realize that we had just roughly a $300,000 annual amount in our CIP to maintain these historic homes. And they are really doing a phenomenal job with that amount to preserve some of the oldest homes, not only in our state, but in our nation. preserve some of the oldest homes, not only in our state but in our nation. So thank you to Emily and her department. And then also directly from a constituent, the Failure Civically, and we were just talking about employees, and I know Mayor Dyer, you had, Friday's a holiday, and one of the Failure Civically had asked, because I guess there was some misinformation out there, that this one day, in addition to Thursday, Mr. Manager, was going to cost almost a half a million dollars. And so I told the Civically I would just ask their question directly, but says, please inquire today's meeting as to the cost of, to taxpayers for making Friday an additional holiday. So that's directly from the Failure Civically. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I wanted to mention, at your, in front of you, you should see a little HRT, Gus. Thank you. Gus, friends, I thought this was really neat, that has been done by HRT, just to inform not only the youth, but giving them a chance to learn about the ridership, and ask little things to do, coloring and the lines. So I made sure to bring one to each of you, and if you need any more, you'll be able to have those. Yeah. And so thanks to HRT for that. And then the second thing I wanted to mention is...
Gentlemen, please.
Sorry, that's my school part of me. Okay. We want to welcome a young man, Mr. Roosevelt Granberry. I don't know if he's here today, but want to share that after meeting him, he's the new person for Town Center. We have somebody that is there to look at the many situations, whether it's homelessness, whether it is to do with parking, and just the event, somebody that's going to now bring together many components that we've had to make Town Center the greatest area that we want to be. So we want to welcome him. I met him over at Economic Development. He has a vision, he's very disciplined, and already you can see some of the difference. So just a little shout out to him. And then the third thing was out at Chesapeake, I attended their corn land school ribbon cutting. And some of you may have seen it in the papers yesterday, I need to go and get a copy, but it was so nice of them to include me in that ribbon cutting, because they were able, several years ago, when I put together that self-guided tour, and with the help of the Convention Center group, in there is our Pleasant Ridge one-room schoolhouse. And they got to see that and called me up, Councilwoman Ella Ward. Says, is there anything in there? I said, yes. It's on Princess Anne Road. They still have a lot of the regional desks, school bell, pop belly store, and when I looked to ask us to bring their parks and recreation people to come and see this. So we have done something that they actually looked at. Now they're going to have a whole little African-American village around this, and they had a really nice turnout for this. And one person I want to mention, too, is Councilwoman Henley, who is out in her area, and she has a little bit more history about this African-American school. If you can share a little for us.
Well, actually, we did the first restoration of that school in the 89-90 timeframe, and if it hadn't been done at that time, that building would have been long gone. But we, we did it, of course, we do things down county as a community thing. We raised money, and we were going to do all these wonderful things, but our money ran out after we had put a new foundation in, and we hadn't finished all that needed to be done. And so that's when Sheriff Frank Drew, at that time, asked if he could finish it. And so that became the partnership between the community and the Sheriff's Department as far as this particular historic site, the Pleasant Ridge School. And it's interesting that you brought that up, because I had seen that that has just now been put on the National Register as a historic site. And in reading all of that background, I think they skipped over what we did in 1990. I've got a whole stack of stuff, because when we did our work at that time, we were so fortunate that several of the people who had attended the school when it was a part of a two-room school back on Charity Neck Road that served the white children, as well as members of, who had been to that school after it had been moved out to Princess Anne Road. But the interesting thing is, both of those sites, the site on Princess Anne Road for the African-American children, and the site on Charity Neck Road for the white children, both are on the same page in the deed book in 1886. They were both acquired at the same time. And, but the unfortunate thing is, we don't have any pictures or a lot of information about the, the black school that was, it burned apparently in about 1915 or 16, somewhere in there, that burned. That happened to a lot of the buildings down there. I mean, my church charities burned twice, but that building burned, but that was right about the time that the county had started to consolidate a lot of the one-room schools. And so that white school and the others in that area were consolidated into a bigger school. And so they moved the big room of that two-room school from Charity Neck to this site on Princess Anne Road. So actually, this one-room school now was a part of the school that was built in 1886, farther down the road, but the one that had been built on that site burned. But I noticed that in doing some of the archaeological work for the historic designation, that they had examined the site and did find some traces of that early school that had burned. It's really important, I think, that we, we get all of this documentation together so that we know what has happened over, over time. But I see that this site, the whole site, is considered historic, and I think the cemetery that's there is a very important historic site. I noticed that the earliest grave there was, they said, 1904, which goes back pretty far. But when I was there a couple of months ago for the book that we did, I really noticed the uniqueness in that cemetery, and I think that's got a great historic value, as well as the school building that's there, along with the church and so forth. So that whole area is a very historic site, very historic, tells us a lot about what went on in the community at that time. But the fact that we have this wonderful school building now, last year, in June of 2023, and I pulled this up as well, the city agreed that we would oversee the $25,000 that the General Assembly had given for restoration of the school building. Plus, we had also had another fundraiser before that, a year or two, to repaint the building and so forth. We had raised some money with a dinner that the Ruritans did for us, and we had $3,000 that we hadn't spent. So that was added to the $25,000 that the General Assembly gave, and the city is supposedly overseeing this. So I would like for us to get a compilation of what work has been done with that money, what the expenditures have been, and if there's more that needs to be done, you know, just what is the situation with that school at this time? I think they were looking to put a new roof on, and that was beyond our capability, but just what have they done with that $28,000, and how has it been spent, and are there things that still need to be done at this point? But we're so fortunate to have that building. It's just, it's really in a lot of its present state. But I did visit one of the teachers who had taught there in the 50s, and it was so interesting to listen to her talk about the way the kids interacted there in that one-room school and so forth. So we've got a great history there, and I think we beat corn land all over the place.
Right. This is why this is important, just sharing for some of those who don't understand what, like the Virginia African-American Culture Center is doing. Though we haven't put up our building, we are going to different areas, we're documenting all of this history for many others to go and learn, that there's a lot of gem of African-American history in our city. And this was one where another city realizing what we're doing reached out, and so was able to be out there for their ribbon cutting. And we thank you for that extra history.
There's a lot to that school. It's, it's wonderful that we've got it, and I'm so glad it's the attention it deserves.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hey, Rosemary, and then Josh.
I love hearing all this history that we're talking about today. It's really wonderful around the table. I feel like I'm going to sort of be mimicking Councilwoman Berluci, because I'm going to talk about, I participated in a small neighborhood event for the Fourth of July on Sunday with Burnet Lakes, and the fire department came out from SeaTac, and they brought their fire truck and kids and their bicycles, all decorated, and it was really great. We walked down to the pool, and everybody had hot dogs and hamburgers. It was just like the perfect way to celebrate the Fourth of July, with all the red, white, and blue. And then the second thing is Winston-Salem Avenue, which you are so kind to extend the funding for that, it's going to be starting this month. And there was a little angst, because it's July, and it's down there at the oceanfront, and they've got, it's a very complicated street, because they've got marinas, they've got high-rise buildings, they've got restaurants, they've got houses, and it's very narrow and all of that. But the staff has been really good to work with the businesses and all down there to say, we're here for you. If you've got a fuel truck coming in, let us know so we can work with it. So we're real excited about Winston-Salem getting started, so thank you so much, Council.
Okay, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give a shout out to the Kimmick Roads Hispanic Chamber, who put on their Hispanic American Festival this weekend at the, at the oceanfront. I went to Mayor and Councilmember Remick at their opening festivities on Friday, I believe it was, and I know they have big plans for the weekend with a lot of attendees expected, so some wonderful, wonderful food. Congratulations to Johnny Garcia, the Chair of the Hispanic Chamber, and my good friend, Julian Baena, who we visited with there, and all the volunteers that made for a really, really nice start to a weekend event. And then lastly, I know, Mr. Manager, I've given them my compliments to you in private, but I know all of us probably feel the same way, but I just wanted to shout out your, your team, Sheila Johnson, Jonathan Torres, RJ Mattis, they are incredible in terms of responding to constituent issues and extremely responsive and friendly, and they do a great job. And I know they do a lot of constituent outreach as well, and they do a great job of helping make us look good. So just wanted to shout them out publicly and say thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Hutch, and then Amelia.
So, just to, it was piggybacking a little bit on what Councilwoman Berluci said, the First District, Kimsville, you know, we were so patriotic that we need three or four days to celebrate the Fourth. We, we started on Saturday in La Cove and did a great parade and had the fire truck. We had everybody out there, just like everybody else, but it was a lot of fun. They, they ended up at the park, so that was, that was really good. That was on Saturday. Then we had Bellamy, and it was touch and go there as to whether the tents were going to hold up there for a few minutes. It was so storming. And then, obviously, as we move into the Fourth, we've got a couple more, Carroland Farms and Bellamy Woods. So it's a, it's a busy time, but it's fun. It's fun being out there with everybody and talking to them and hanging out with people you've grown up with, so it's, it's really nice. And then, as Councilwoman Berluci said, also, I have another town hall. I'm trying to hit all the different quadrants of the First District, and this time it's at Larkspur Middle on July 17th. It's really just a question-and-answer session with some highlights that I've garnered from being here now six months, and to talk about it. So it's at Larkspur Middle on the 17th, if you'd like to come out for that. Thanks, sir.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention, Richa Spade, congratulations, the young people that you mentioned, how well they've done from agriculture, because yes, we value the agri-business. And at least from us, if you all would join me in giving a round of applause to those who had, you said, a 200?
Over $200,000.
Over $200,000, they received that.
... wrote in their documentation. Fantastic.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'll finish up. Yesterday, I got invited to go to a forum at the Naval Station, and you probably read about it a little bit in the paper. Today was on the front page, where the Navy is requesting additional housing in Hampton Roads for 8,000 sailors. And a lot of the discussion, myself was there, Congresspeople, Whitman, Higgins, Bobby Scott were there, a number of admirals, the governor phoned in, and we were talking about the quality of life for the military that live in this region. And we can't understate it enough, and I think sometimes we take for granted the military, you know, they're part of the DNA of, you know, those who live among us. And, you know, once again, a lot of the motivation for the, previously, when there was a ship in dry dock, especially a carrier, everybody would live onboard during the construction. And regrettably, over the years, have been number of suicides and, you know, mental, you know, situations that evolved. And then, once again, this is gonna, you know, once again, you know, this is a confrontation of reality that every city in Hampton Roads is going to have to deal with. And in addition, Newport New Shipbuilding is going to be looking to hire 5,000 more people, because we are woefully behind on the national scale in keeping us up with, you know, what's going on in China. But once again, it was a very sobering meeting, you know, to be at, and once again, there were asked for commitments, both in the cities and also regionally, you know, to address the quality of life issues, which are retainable, housing, daycare, and, you know, and things of that nature. And yes, I would like to address something, and I would, at this point, like to personally thank all of the employees in the city who work so very hard. Yes, as a mayor, I do have a prerogative to, you know, give a holiday, and once again, in line with the other cities that came. And, you know, once again, we, you know, I teach a course in human resources management now, and one of the things that's really being encouraged is recognition and appreciation for all the employees that we have here, and, you know, to spend time with their families and other people that are, many people that are going to be off on Friday. And so I especially want to thank them for that recognition, and, you know, but, and first, but, you know, once again, with Virginia Beach being a trendsetter, if I'm not mistaken, we were the first city in the Commonwealth to recognize Jim Tink, and a lot of other cities followed after that. But once again, we are so grateful, you know, to our employees, what they do every day, and be assured that essential city services will continue throughout the entire week. Okay, thank you. Okay, time for the agenda review.
Okay, so we're going to pull K1, and we do have a speaker for case seven. Do you want to speak if it's not? They only want to say if it's not. Okay. Does anybody have anything else they want pulled, or?
Sabrina?
Want to know on anything?
I just want to make a note on K7, I'm abstaining, and there's a letter on file to that effect.
Uh, pull seven.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's it?
That's it?
All righty. Today, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meeting allowed by Section 2.237-11A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property; discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or distribution of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A3, and that would be District Five. And legal matters: consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding to specific legal matters... to specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.23711A8, and that's the Juvenile Detention Center, and also Adams Outdoor Advertising. And then personal matters; discussion or consideration of interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1, and that's council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second. Councilwoman Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilwoman Remick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Remick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ralph?
Aye.
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 Aye. Dave, we are recessed into questions.